May I please have everyone's attention? Before the meeting begins, we ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. The Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees Meeting is an open meeting for the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, patrons may only address the board during the designated Audience Item Section on the agenda. If you have printed material you want to give to board members, you must provide them to me or any other officer present, and we will provide them to the board. We also ask members of the audience be respectful of others by maintaining three feet of distance between each other and remaining quiet so that everyone is able to hear the proceeding. Face masks are optional. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Walton. The current time is 6:01 PM, and this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum attending both in person and on a video conference. Notice that this meeting has been posted online and at the Fort Bend ISD Administration Building for at least 72 hours. This meeting is being livestreamed to the district's YouTube channel, and a recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the district's webpage following the conclusion of the meeting. Please rise for the singing of our National Anthem, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. That was awesome. I would now like to turn this over to Dr. Whitbeck for our recognitions.
That was Hightower High School Choir that just sang that beautiful rendition of the Star Spangled Banner for us. Board of Trustees, if you'll meet me in front of the dais, we'll allow time from his sofa to introduce our recognitions this evening.
Thank you so much, and as you're making your way down, I'd like to ask the audience for another round of applause to Alexa Costanada. From Hightower High School, she was part of the choir ensemble who did a phenomenal job. And once you get placed, we're going to invite those students back in for a photo. Good job, Hightower High School. Thank you so much, and for all the fine arts staff who support them, you guys do amazing work. We appreciate you so much. Next, from Fort Settlement Middle School, we have Leah Farah, eighth grader there at Fort Settlement, was chosen as one of the top masters in the 10th Annual BroadCam Foundation and Society for the Science Premier STEM Competition for middle school students. A very special thank you. Go ahead, come on in, and we'll, if you'll shake hands with our board members, we'll get a picture with you. And a very special thank you to Leah, science teacher Karen Staley, who is also here this evening. Ms. Staley? Oh, I don't think Ms. Staley was able to join us, but we definitely want a picture. Leah, if you'll join us right up here? Good job. Continuing with our fine arts celebration, we have Dulles High School Honored String Orchestra and the Dulles Middle School Symphony Orchestra. They received national recognition as winners for the 2021 Mark of Excellence Project sponsored by the Foundation for Music Education Organization. This recognition is awarded for outstanding achievement and performance. So if those students could start making their way in, we've got representing Dulles Middle School Symphony Orchestra, Shanyi Ayadi, orchestra president. Reagan Vogel, Assistant Director. And Sally Kirk, Head Director. Very good. We're going to put this for a photo. All right, Dulles Middle School, good job. Next, we have representing Dulles High School Honored String Orchestra, Claire Wang, our orchestra student representative. Angela Yip, Assistant Director. And Michael Isador, Director. Good job, and we will get a picture real quick? Good job, Dulles High School. Now, representing the Dulles High School Philharmonic Orchestra, we have Erin Staley, our orchestra student representative. Again, joining her, Angela Yip, Primary Director, and Michael Isador, Director. It's like deja vu. All right, good job. They're all pros now. Now, representing Kemperner High School, we have Caitlin Lee. Caitlin Lee is a senior at Kemperner High School and was selected by the Houston Museum of Natural Science to receive the 2021 Evelyn Frenzy Scholarship for Outstanding Achievement in Science and Math. She did a phenomenal job with her academic credentials. We're very proud of her. And then also from Kemperner High School, we have Jerome Munoz, a science teacher who was selected by the museum to also receive the 2021 Well Menia C. Robertson Excellence in Science or Mathematics Teaching Award. And he was acknowledged for his focus on student growth and inquiry-based approach to classroom learning using differentiated instruction methods, including hands-on, project-based assignments. So we're very proud of Mr. Munoz, too. Good job at Kemperner High School. Now, for our final recognition this evening, I would like to invite Dr. Pam Wells, the Region Four Executive Director, up to the mic for another award.
So thank you so much for the opportunity to come join today. I want to thank you, President Rosenthal, members of the board, Dr. Whitbeck, and guests. It is such a privilege for me to have this opportunity to publicly announce and to celebrate with you the selection of Sherman Baptiste as the 2021 Region Four Secondary Teacher of the Year. Now, I have a few things I want to share, if y'all don't mind, because I want you to really understand what a great accomplishment this really is. And I'm so happy that a son, Aiden, is here to see his dad honored. I want to share with you that every fall, the Texas Association of School Administrators facilitates the Texas Teacher of the Year Program, which recognizes Regional Teachers of the Year for their outstanding leadership and excellence. This year, the Region Four Teachers of the Year Program recognized 81 outstanding teachers from 41 school districts throughout the seven county area. But this is what is so significant about Sherman being selected. There are more than 79,000 teachers in Region Four, and Mr. Baptiste was the Secondary Teacher of the Year. So that is quite an accomplishment. Sorry about that. As you may know, Mr. Baptiste is in his sixth year of teaching in Fort Bend ISD. Most recently, is a personal finance literacy and world geography teacher at Elkins High School. He makes it a priority to ensure his students feel confident in expressing themselves as well as holding open-minded discussions while objectively, and I'm sure respectfully, listening to others' viewpoints. What a wonderful gift that is for his students, for your community, for our state and nation. As the Assistant Coordinator of the Advancement via Individual Determination Initiative, he worked closely with all students in order to help prepare them for college careers in life. He was especially proud of the collaboration with the College and Career Readiness Department, in which they worked together to implement strategies to raise students' awareness of scholarships, grant opportunities, and other resources that were available to them in order to attend college. But this is what is so significant. 100% of the avid graduating seniors who he worked with were accepted into accredited four-year universities. What a tremendous accomplishment. So in honor of your award, I want to share with you that I had a hard time getting up here with all this, but I want to share with you that we have for you your own personal computer, a wireless charging notebook, and a mini speaker that were all generously donated by our sponsor, Office Depot. So congratulations, Mr. Baptiste.
That concludes our recognition for this evening.
Definitely the best part of our board meetings. Our next agenda item is a internal audit of our Communications Department, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Whitbeck.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on a second. I forgot audience items. We had, we had one speaker sign up, Mr. Rodrigo Carrion. Mr. Carrion, you have three minutes to speak. Let me read this, just to make it. Boards encourages and welcomes comments and input from our patrons. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and please refrain from mentioning a student or employee's name when voicing a concern or complaint, as board policy provides alternative procedures through the grievance process policies GF Local and DGPA Local to seek resolution to complaints. The Superintendent's Office, Human Resources, and the administration in general can assist you in finding these, those procedures online. The following procedures will apply to tonight's audience comments. I'll read the name of the person registered to speak and show that they have three minutes to speak. Once the speaker starts their comments, Board Secretary Ms. Shirley Rose Gilliam will announce when they have 30 seconds remaining, once the three-minute timeline has elapsed, and whether or not the speaker has concluded their comments, Dr. Rose Gilliam will announce that the speaker's time has elapsed. I'll then ask you to return to your seat so that the next speaker may have their three minutes to address the board. Mr. Carrion, please proceed.
Good evening, board. My name is Rodrigo Carrion. I come to speak like an lead item 8B for providing an equal learning environment for our students. In order to do that, well, the board needs to be responsible. Yesterday, I had a special meeting, but I didn't see no Asians invited to a board meeting. I didn't see no Hispanics to the tables. How could that be equally? Equally, we've got to have the same amount of people. Asians, 25%, Hispanic, Anglo, African-American. That's the way to provide equally, by sharing different cultures, different ideas, not just one or two. That's, that's not enough. So we need to do a better job to do that and get the public involved and to do the job for our students to not be left behind. Another issue that I'm concerned about that I reported since 2019 are school bus transportation. Our students, disabled students waiting on the dangerous road, Terminal Fresno, for a bus. Instead of a bus, the school district taking responsibility and picking up the disabled students on, on their home, at their home, Indiana Road in Terminal Fresno. So it's not good for our students to be disabled, wheelchairs, and wait on a dangerous road. And, and I don't know why the board hasn't done, done anything to solve this problem. That, that's ridiculous. It's not leadership. So the board needs to take it seriously and get the job done. And also, I'm concerned, since the pandemic, I haven't been here to, to notice. How about my, my school, Blue Ridge Elementary? Has those restaurants been renovated? They were in the barn in 2018, but I, I haven't been able to see because I haven't been able to go, and social distancing has been affected. So I need to take the board to go and look for ourselves, is the job getting done or not? That's very important, and, and to make, make sure. And also, why is the board making us public and timely to sign by 4:30? What, what's the concern about public coming and speaking? I should be using, just like right here, 15 minutes before signing, turn in the signing sheet and speak. And what's the concern, if you're in the public's concern and ideas? If you're not interested, then what are we doing here? We're supposed to be here to take the public seriously and get the job done and not leave the public and nobody behind. That's, that's purpose of being elected official, serving the people, hearing from the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Thank you for being here this evening. Our next item is information item. Gibson Consulting will provide us their audit.
Mr. President, I would like to, at this time, to introduce Mr. Greg Gibson and Ms. Carrie Monk-
Monkowitz, both of Gibson Consulting, who will make a presentation on the internal audit conducted on the communications program. Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, President Rosenthal, Dr. Whitbeck. It's great to see you again. Welcome back, members of the board. My name is Greg Gibson. I'm president and founder of Gibson Consulting Group. We are the, have the privilege of serving as your internal audit function for Fort Bend ISD and have been for the last eight years. We are, still have our affinity partnership with the Texas Association of School Boards. We're the only designated firm, as in affinity partner, affinity partner for internal audit services statewide. And so we're very proud of that relationship, and we're equally as proud, if not more proud, to have Fort Bend ISD as one of our internal audit program clients. My role on this audit, Carrie, as you'll see shortly, is in command of the details on this project. She was the project director and was the senior auditor for this project. As in all internal audits, I serve a quality assurance role. But I'm going to pause now and turn it over to Carrie Monkowitz, who's going to deliver a presentation on the communications audit. Thank you.
Good evening. Let me see if I can make sure I, there we go, make sure I can change the slides. Good evening, Mr. Rosenthal, Dr. Whitbeck, and members of the board. Just wanted to also express my gratitude for being able to present to you the results of our communications management audit report tonight. Before I get started, I also wanted to thank Veronica Sofar and her team, who were very helpful to us during the course of this audit. Early on, believe it or not, this audit actually started in December 2019, pre-COVID, so it going way back. But they were very helpful to us in providing us with data and information, helping us to schedule focus groups and interviews, and then, of course, providing input into the survey instrument that was developed as part of this audit. So, the primary objective of this communications management audit was to identify the strengths and areas for improvement with respect to the department's services and practices. The scope of work really included relevant board policies, administrative guidelines. We looked at the department's organizational structure, staffing levels, individual roles and responsibilities, and job positions descriptions. We also had the opportunity to review all of the planning documents, including a crisis communications plan, standard operating procedures, samples of communications, and many performance indicators that were routinely collected by the department. As you're aware, the Communications Department also produces a variety of digital and print publications, as well as providing content for the various social media platforms. So those were part of our review. They also provide content on the district's website, as well as some of the campus websites, and are also responsible for marketing and branding Fort Bend ISD, as well as media relations. Also, as part of the scope of our review was collecting and soliciting feedback from the various stakeholders within the district to get a sense as to their perceptions of satisfaction with the quality and the frequency of communications that they receive, both from the district level and from the campus level. I did want to just point out, before we sort of jumped into the rest of the presentation tonight, is that when it comes to communications, it's one of those functions that really is the responsibility, not just with the Communications Department, but as information and communications, they sort of scaffold throughout the various departments and campuses. And so, when we did this audit, we felt that it was really important, not just to look at the satisfaction levels that folks are having with the types of communications they get, but also to ask specifically about the supports that campuses and other central office administrators, including the trustees, get from the Communications Department in their own communications. So our approach to conducting this work really relied on reviewing lots of data and documents that were provided to us early in the project as part of a comprehensive data request. We also benchmarked key indicators against five comparator districts that were selected in collaboration with the department, and they were selected based on just similarity in size and demographics and overall performance. We also relied heavily on the National School Public Relations Association, NASPRA. They produce a set of standards that are widely accepted, so looking at those standards as part of the evaluation component was really important to us as we went through this audit. We also conducted interviews and focus groups with district leadership, department staff, and other stakeholders, as well as issued an employee survey to the district's more than 12,000 employees. And through all of those methods, our goal, again, was to understand how satisfied folks are in terms of the quality of the communications that they receive, the frequency with which they receive those communications. And then, of course, we also solicited input from them in any ways that the district could do a better job of improving communications to those stakeholders. So with all of that, we triangulated all of that information, synthesized the qualitative and quantitative data, and really came up with the findings and recommendations that are included in the report. So just quickly on the staff survey, we achieved a 54, almost a 54% response rate. The survey was administered online, but several departments had the opportunity to fill out paper copies, because we know some of the transportation departments, facilities, school nutrition, and I think safety and security don't access their email on a day-to-day basis, so we wanted to give them an opportunity to also complete the survey, so they could either do the online version or the paper version. And then, everybody had the opportunity to complete the survey in English or Spanish. So this slide here just gives you an overview of the different response rates. When we looked at the survey results, we like to peel back the onion and disaggregate the data in a way that, so we looked at it by different employee groups, and then, of course, we looked at it by work location. And the idea there is, we were just trying to identify if there was any discernible patterns or trends in how different groups responded to some of the questions on our survey. So, before I jump into the individual recommendations, I wanted to kind of give you a big picture of the takeaways from our audit. I would start out by saying that, number one, we heard a lot of really positive feedback about the Communications Department overall. The department itself is viewed very favorably by pretty much all of the stakeholder groups that we spoke with. The Chief Communications Officer, as well as the former director, were, in many cases, called out individually by name as being very effective in their roles. But there is a broad perception by the, many of the stakeholder groups that we talked to, that some of the messaging and the communications really are more reactive and not proactive. We also noted, and areas for improvement had to do with the department's overall organizational structure and staffing levels within the department. There's many areas where the demand for the services provided by the department are increasing, and so we want to make sure that staffing levels can meet the demand for those services. We'll talk a little bit more about the communications plan, but that was definitely an area in need of improvement. We also found through our review that the department doesn't systematically have protocols in place where it measures the effectiveness of certain initiatives through key performance indicators. And then, lastly, through our surveys and through the feedback that we got from the surveys and the focus groups, there really are lots of opportunities to improve the way in which the district connects with various stakeholder So let me start with all of the positive things. In terms of commendations, so as I mentioned, NASPRA. So the Fort Bend, the department's communication team has earned numerous awards from the Texas School Public Relations Association. That's the local version of the national association. You may know Veronica is president of that association, so that strong connection with that organization is obviously very positive. As we saw here tonight, one of the other things that were viewed very favorably are the special events and recognition programs that's put on by the department. I think, across the board, everybody that we spoke with had very positive things to say about all of those events, especially if you think about this audit going on during COVID, they did an exceptional job. Branding and marketing campaigns are also widely recognized.
Uh-uh.
Sorry. Are also widely recognized, and that helps build support and trust and confidence in the district's mission. And then, lastly, more than 86% of the district and campus administrators are satisfied with the supports and services that they receive from the department. So again, that percentage is really high and obviously very positive. So with that, in tonight's presentation, we wanted to just share a couple slides with you that provide some good examples of some of the charts that are included in the final audit report. And here you can see, we asked staff very specific questions about the department, and you can see the percentages on the right overall are very high. Staff routinely said that department staff are accessible, they're responsive, they get the support that they need in terms of public relations support, or putting on events, special events at their campuses, and then they also feel like they know who to contact within the department when they should have a question. So with regard to recommendations, again, the first recommendation is really centered around the department's organizational structure and staffing levels. As I just alluded to, the demand for services specifically around special events and recognition programs has really increased. And during the course of this audit, three positions, I think three of the 15 positions had been vacant. So that was presenting some challenges for the department. When we looked at job descriptions and we talked to individuals within the department, there were some areas where we didn't feel like those two aligned, and they weren't, and sometimes what was on the job descriptions didn't match the actual roles and responsibilities that individuals were performing. And there was a couple of job descriptions that we found that were really outdated. I think the oldest one was six years old, which seems to not be current enough to actually be reflective of their responsibilities. Within the department, organizationally, the staff within the department were organized around internal communications and external communications. And again, that really didn't seem to be the way that the work flowed within the department. So our recommendations there are really centered around working with HR to update those job descriptions, reclassifying some of those positions so that they better align to the needs of the department, and then, obviously, filling some of those vacant positions. The next recommendation is around board policies. So as part of this audit, we looked at the online policy manual, and we identified four legal policies and nine local policies that we thought were in some way, shape, or form relevant to the scope of this audit. And what we found, big picture, is that overall, we feel that the district has a really strong policy framework when it comes to the areas of scope, or the areas that are included in the scope of this review. But there were some areas that we felt the Board could do a better job of communicating expectations around through board policy. So let me also just say that, when we looked at policies, again, we looked at the NASPRA standards, and then we also looked at the comparator school districts to get a sense as to what types of things they were including in their local policies, and that's also detailed in our report. But the areas that really jumped out to us, number one, were around crisis communications, and making sure that through policy, that there's an expectation around who that point person should be whenever topics come up that are considered a crisis, or perhaps very politically sensitive, or otherwise something that's very, needs to be handled at a higher level within the district. Let's see. We also noticed that we didn't find anything in current policy that addressed accessibility standards for your online content. So that was another area that we felt that the expectations could be codified through board policy. And then, we'll talk a little bit more about the need for a communications, an effective communications strategy and plan, but that was another area that we thought should be in policy. So, so I just mentioned the communications strategy and plan. The department does have one, but what we found when we actually looked at that plan, it really isn't serving its intended purpose of being a roadmap for the department. What we found was, there's a lot of good information in there, but it was missing a lot of key components. So, for example, what we didn't see was very specific goals, and then specific strategies tied to those goals with tactics and key performance measures. So what we were really hoping to see is that the plan would really drive the focus and the work of the department, which it currently doesn't seem to be doing. We also learned that the plan was sort of developed at the leadership level within the department, and it hadn't been well-socialized to others within the department. And other district administrators that we talked to throughout the audit weren't familiar with the plan. So, so the recommendations here really focus on really revamping that plan and making it a tool that the department can use to organize and focus the work, and then, obviously, making sure that all of the district priorities, or that the work that the department is doing is supporting the district's communications Very similar to that last recommendation, we also think that the department needs to be doing a better job of incorporating research and evaluation components into the plan. So what we didn't see was that there was any type of systemic evaluation components built into some of the initiatives to determine how effective some of the initiatives that the department is undertaking. So there were some limited things that are being done. They do collect some analytics around social media, some of the website analytics, Let's Talk, which is your internal communications platform, and then after some of the recognition events, they do post, or they do do some post-event surveys. All good things, but they're not, but more broadly than that, there's lots of other initiatives that are going on where they're not systematically determining the effectiveness of those communications And then, obviously, in the era of sort of limited time, limited budget, making sure that we do that is obviously really important. So just sharing with you some more staff results from the survey. We asked, excuse me. So we asked staff to provide feedback on the effectiveness of key messages that is a priority for the district. And here you can see, for example, 72% of the staff that responded to the survey feels that the district is pretty effective, or mostly are very effective, in creating awareness of the district's mission in the school system. 69% believe that the district does a good job at celebrating diversity and inclusion, and so on down the list. At the bottom of the list, many of the stakeholders, half of the stakeholders, felt that the district could do a better job of communicating to those in Fort Bend that don't have children in the school system. So I mentioned earlier, communications, crisis communications is very important, and having effective communications during a crisis situation is important for obvious reasons. When we surveyed our district staff, we found that 75% of the staff that we surveyed disagreed with a statement that said there are clear communication protocols for me to follow during an emergency. Obviously, that's a really high number, and that's a really important thing. Making sure that communications are clear and accurate, factually accurate, during a crisis situation is very important, and making sure that principles are supported in those communications efforts, because oftentimes, they might be the point person when something happens at the campus level. So making sure that the department supports others in their communications efforts through standard protocols, you know, there's lots of situations that can happen that are standard, whether it be, I don't even want to get, infestation of rodents or something on a campus. We want to make sure that we've got some prepared protocols that campus administrators can follow in responding to those communications. Along with that, in addition to the protocols, there's obviously a need for additional training. I think, across the board, all of the stakeholders that we talked to, even when we spoke with the previous superintendent and some of the trustees that aren't here tonight, and other stakeholders, everybody felt that they could benefit from additional and formal training provided by the Communications Department. And that really ranged a whole different topic, in terms of supporting them with their written communications, their verbal communications, video presentations. Really, across the board, all of our stakeholder groups were really hoping to receive formalized communications training from the department. And then I think, just on the last bullet point there, is just making sure that, again, as I mentioned earlier, the Communications Department isn't the only one in Fort Bend ISD that's responsible for communication. So making sure that others are supported in those communications efforts. It really is the responsibility of the entire organization. So what we learned through our staff surveys and from the different focus groups is that different groups of people have various preferences for, and satisfaction levels with the types of communications they receive. the types of communications they receive, and the frequency with which they receive that information. And of course, that varied depending on the topic that we're talking about and the type of information being communicated. What we found when we, I'll flip to the next slide, but this chart basically shows you when we asked all of the different employee groups on the survey, how satisfied are you with the communications that you receive from the district? How satisfied are you with the communications you receive from your campus or your department? You can see that the satisfaction rates really varied, and varied significantly by the different groups of employees. So at the top, district leadership appeared to be most satisfied with the communications, both from the district level and from the campuses. But down at the bottom, you can see that your transportation staff, and this was really sort of a theme throughout the survey responses that we got, that your transportation staff were, I would say, least satisfied with the quality and the frequency of the communications that they were receiving. So having an awareness around how different groups of employees feel about the communications that they're getting will really help make sure that we target communications, both through different communication channels and messaging, and ways that better reach and engage those employee groups. This slide is sort of along those same lines, it just presents it a little bit differently. So again, overall, we asked staff about how satisfied they are with the frequency of the communications they receive on various topics. And they replied, not enough, just right, too much. And so what was interesting is you can see here where sort of the pockets are. I mean, most staff felt that the frequency of the communications that they have is just right, but there were some areas where staff did not feel that they were getting enough information when it comes to certain topics. Percentage-wise, at the very bottom, central office reorganizations was one of those areas where staff would definitely like more information communicated to them about what's going on So as I mentioned earlier, as you know, the department is responsible for producing a variety of publications. And so we asked our employee stakeholder groups about each of these communications in terms of how aware are they of some of these digital publications, and then how informative are these digital publications? Notably, 57% of the staff that responded to the survey disagreed with the statement that says the print and digital publications produced by the communications department are of high quality. So not something that we want to hear, because this is obviously something that the department works very hard on. So the recommendation is around soliciting input from those stakeholders and getting their feedback about each of these different publications, because we want to make sure at the end of the day, if this is something we need to make them more aware that these exist, or perhaps we need to revamp what we're doing with these publications, maybe we need to discontinue some of them. But we want that information to inform those decisions so that we can make sure that the effort that we're putting into these publications, we're getting the bang for the buck, so to speak. And this chart just shows a breakdown of how staff responded to each of those different publications. Checking in with Charles, obviously, pretty much everybody was aware with it, of it. And I would just broadly say too, is in our focus groups, we also asked stakeholders in focus groups and about each of these publications. And so the feedback that we got from there was very consistent with what we got from our staff survey. The department is also responsible for the content on the district's website, as well as for putting content on the different social media platforms of Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube. The district also has a LinkedIn profile, but that is managed by the HR department. And then individual campuses and departments are responsible for the content of their own What we found was, I'll just share with you this other slide. So we also looked at the number of followers for each of these different accounts for each of the comparator districts. And we just did a bit of an interesting analysis, what we call it is a relative reach ratio. And basically, what that means is that we looked at the number of followers for each of these different social media accounts relative to the size of the district, to the total enrollment. And so a relative reach of a 1.0 means basically you have the same number of followers as you do the number of students. So it's a very imperfect, but sort of interesting little metric, in the sense that if you really look at the data here, so number one, we know that Fort Bend, if I go down to the bottom of the chart where you see 0.54 where Twitter is, and that means about half of the, about half of the size of the enrollment is following the district on its Twitter accounts. So Fort Bend, Arlington, and Northside all predominantly rely on Twitter, whereas the other three districts tend to rely more on Facebook for their communications. So the takeaway from this little analysis is really just understanding the different social media platforms that are important to different groups of stakeholders. So for example, when we talked to parents, we found that they really did prefer communicating and getting information on Facebook, but yet most of the information that's pushed out on social media at the campus level is on Twitter. So there's a little bit of a disconnect there from where they would like to get their information versus where the district is pushing out its information in terms of social So as we all know, employees can be the most credible sources of information about a school system, so to the extent that they are very satisfied or very dissatisfied can impact whether or not they can be positive or negative ambassadors for the school system. So we really want to make sure that we've got systems and structures in place that encourage our employees to be positive ambassadors of the district's vision, mission, goals, and objectives. One way that we tried to assess this through the survey was asking employees whether or not they would recommend Fort Bend ISD as a place to work, or whether or not they would recommend Fort Bend ISD as a place to send their child. So what we found was overall, those responses were pretty positive. We asked individuals to rate those two questions on a scale of 1 to 10, with 1 being not likely and 10 being most likely. And what we found, again, overall, very positive, but when you disaggregate it and you look at it by different employee groups, you see very different, very different responses. And so again, transportation employees had the lowest rating of some of the other employee The very last recommendation is really centered around how the department pushes out information via email. So I didn't cover in tonight's presentation, but in the report, we've got a couple of charts in there that show that email communications are most favored as a form of communication by your employees. And what we found was that, you know, folks really rely on email to get their information. But when the department pushes information out via email, unfortunately, they don't, aren't able to create distribution lists that are specific to either departments or different employee groups. They're aware of this issue and challenge, it's been going on for years, and it's because the HR department manages those distribution, I guess, the way the information is coded within the system. And so I know that there have been ongoing conversations between the communications department, IT, as well as HR to figure out if there's a way that they can do that. But with staff turnover, it's something that's very difficult to manage. So we did want to highlight it as an area that they should continue to look at to address that issue, because what we heard anecdotally from staff during focus groups and even in the open-ended portion of our survey was that they were feeling like information overload in terms of emails. So certain groups were getting information that wasn't relevant to them, and then so obviously, that presents a risk of over-communicating information to people that don't need it, and then the people that need that information might not see it because they're just getting inundated with other emails that aren't relevant to them. Okay, that was a lot of information, and that summarizes our audit at a very high level. So I am happy to take any questions if you all have them.
Thank you, Ms. Monkowitz. Do we have any questions? Ms. Hannon?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Monkowitz. It was very informative, and I appreciate the work that you did, and I really appreciate the communications department working with Gibson to produce this audit. Can you remind me, you mentioned that this process started in December of 2019. Can you remind me, I can't, I can't recall seeing it in here. I know that focus groups were in July and August of 2020, but when was the survey pushed out to staff?
The survey was in the fall. So just to recap the timeline, so pre-COVID, we originally initiated December 2019, and as everybody knows, March 2020 is when COVID happened. We were able, before March, we were able to conduct a lot of our interviews and focus groups. We did those virtually, and actually, we did some of those after, actually, no, I'm sorry, those were done in the summer. And then the survey was originally going to take place in the summer, but the decision was made after collaborating with the district that we wanted to get input about communications about COVID-19. So we didn't want to ask people what they thought about the decisions the district was making, but in our survey, we did ask them about how well the district was communicating about some of the policies it was developing in response to COVID-19. So that survey was actually administered in the fall of 2020.
So there were two different surveys?
There was, I'm sorry, there was one survey that was in the fall of 2020. The focus groups were in the summer, and then rewinding back to that, some of the interviews were conducted.
Okay, so it was, all the data was collected post-pandemic?
Yes, on the survey, yes.
Okay, I just, that helps me understand the mindset that people have, you know, had at the time. I appreciate that. I would, you don't have to answer it right now, but because I know for many years, checking in with Charles and then our acting superintendent, that we had, say, if Adra sums it up, so the information on, about those two pieces of communication, if the audit consulting group could just confirm, there's some information I don't quite understand. It says 52% of the survey responses said that they found it informative. Does that sound right? But on the next page, it gives different data, and to me, that's, I'm a parent too, and I think that's just important because that's been such a giant piece for so long. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the data correctly. So it's that page and the next page, if you could provide any clarification on that, I would appreciate it. And then I have one more.
I'm sorry, would you like me to look for that right now?
No, if you could, is there any way you could follow up with the board, maybe through Dr. Whitbeck? I don't, you don't have to look for it now. I just want to make sure, because I'm looking at two pieces of information with very different numbers, and I'm just curious about that. And then if, Mr. Rosenthal, if you can, if you want, could you loop back to me? Because I actually have some questions for the board audit committee chair, just to educate me a little bit. So if everybody else wants to, to address Ms. Monkowitz, thank you very much, Ms. Monkowitz.
Ms. Malone?
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. And it's interesting, because I think a lot of it aligns with what we know in the general public. One thing, though, that I found interesting, and so I'd like some clarification on, and that is the staff survey response rates in correlation to the staff survey results. What I found pretty clear was the lowest group of response rates were the temporary subs, as well as the transportation staff. In addition to that, it directly correlated with the staff survey results as far as their recommendations. So I'd ask, for example, with 18% with subs, how qualitative is this data for those two groups?
I mean, that's a very good question, and obviously, the higher the response rates are for any particular group, the more confidence that we can have that sort of the perceptions that are expressed on the survey are relevant to the broader group. Obviously, the lower response rates, it leaves more, blinking on the word, sorry, I was totally blinking on the word. So can you, I'm sorry, so your question?
Well, I mean, for example, 18% of the temporary subs responded. So I'm asking, how qualitative is the data when I'm looking at the survey results if I know that over 80% failed to respond to the survey? Do we perceive nonresponsiveness as what? Where is the, I guess, how do we interpret non-responsive? So for example, I'm a mother, and I receive a lot of surveys from the district, right? I'm going to be honest, I don't reply to all of them, and I think that's consistent when we look at the survey response rates, that many people do not respond. I think our highest response rate on here is 68%, 68.2%, right? So there's a considerable group that doesn't respond. And so I guess, not I guess, what I'm asking is how qualitative is the data, knowing that the survey results, we mentioned on multiple occasions, transportation staff being displeased with communications. However, only 18% of transportation staff responded and participated in the survey. So what does that tell us about the other 82?
Yeah, unfortunately, it doesn't tell us a lot, right? Because we can only go by the data that we've received. I will just say broadly, overall, 54% for the district overall. I know from working with our research team, they felt like that was a really solid number. I know when we were going back and forth administering the survey, they're able to monitor the responses by different groups real time. 54% is a very, a number, a percentage response rate that they felt very confident in. Obviously, you start, when you start dealing with smaller groups of employees and lower response rates, I mean, you know, some groups are just more difficult to reach. What I would suggest is that if we want, I mean, I think the important thing here is we want to make sure that we are reaching out to those groups that are difficult to reach, right? Whether, and maybe a survey isn't the best way to do it. It could be through focus groups, it could be other ways. But I think that the important thing is we've got to recognize where we've got pockets of employees that are hard to reach, that we find ways to reach them, so that we can understand how we can do a better job of communicating to them on a variety of topics and issues, and making sure that their communications needs are met.
So do you feel like we did reach out to them and find methods?
Well, I would love to have seen.
Methods that were effective?
Well, I would love to have seen a response rate that was higher. I mean, that's your question. I mean, and unfortunately, it is what it is for that department. So I wouldn't, I don't know that with an 18% response rate that we can extrapolate and say the entire department felt that way. I think we have to qualify these responses in the context of what the response rates were.
Okay, and then to follow up with that, so on a positive, because I like to always end on positives. So what I will say is I agree, 54% system-wide is a great response rate. And that with that, I could support, I can definitely support some of the initiatives based on that data. And I, and that is great. In addition to that, when you did extrapolate it to certain sub-pop's, and being able to address some of their concerns, it makes sense, and the rate, in my view, it is qualitative in many of those groups. And addressing it is pretty clear. So thank you so much for all of your hard work in putting this together.
Welcome.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think, Mrs. Malone, what you're maybe trying to get at is, if we have a low response rate, does, might that mean that people are satisfied or they're not satisfied? I don't know what that answer is. I mean, I would think that there's some rule of thumb out there, you know, when people don't respond, it's one or the other, you know?
I don't have a rule of thumb for that, unfortunately.
Okay. Ms. Hannon?
Yes, so this might be for Gibson, but it might also be for audit committee, and there's just some clarification. And thank you to Dr. Whitbeck for asking staff to try to help clarify some of these. So one of my questions surrounds making sure, and maybe this is just me that wants it, but making sure that when we have audits, that we actually see the number of participants in focus groups. And maybe I missed it, but it, you know, it identifies focus groups, elementary principals, secondary school principals, parents of elementary school students, and parents of secondary students. And so I know the focus of this was really internal, or just what I'm seeing, it was a, mostly internal. But I guess that, that, does that need to come from the audit, the board audit committee to you to make sure that we, like, if we want to see how many elementary parents were in the focus group and what campuses were represented, do we need to explicit, does our board audit committee, Mr. Rice, do you have a response?
I'll wait for you to finish, and then I'll respond.
That's just, that's just one of my questions. That's just, in several audits in the past, and That's just, in several audits in the past, and Mr. Rice, you'll have to forgive me because we weren't, I wasn't on the board at the time, so that's another question that maybe you could help with, but, so, let me stop there. So, thinking about numbers of focus groups, or even numbers of teachers' lesson plans, those are the kinds of things, like, I'm missing the N.
So, let me tell you with the focus groups, what our methodology is, not just for this audit, but for many of the audits that we do do, is our, the typical size of our focus groups is about eight to 10 participants. Sometimes, it's a little less, depending on, we invite that many, sometimes people don't show. We do, it's more of like a group interview than a focus group. We have a variety of topical areas that we cover, and we ask for their input and feedback on those topical areas. So, for that reason, we don't want our focus groups to be too large. And so, we also make sure that we sort of clearly state that we use the information that we get from the focus groups to directionally sort of point us in different directions, depending on what we're looking at, if we want to better understand our process, and I'm just speaking very generally now. Information that we learn in those focus groups are very helpful. Sometimes, we get some very candid feedback about different topics that are also helpful. But in no way do we want to say what we get out of the focus groups is representative of all. So, if we do a focus group with parents, for example, we know that eight parents in no way, shape, or form are representative of the entire district, but they do help inform us on certain topics that we're specifically asking about in terms of maybe the types of information they've received, or not received, or what's important to them. So, we use that to supplement the work of our audit, but we don't say that they are representative of all parents, for example, in the district.
Okay, thank you. That information is very helpful to me, because as I read it, I just, I really hadn't, I didn't know. I didn't know. So, that was just a very tiny blip on the data that you collected. And so, I guess that's maybe not Audit Committee, it's just, just something that's interesting to me, is to always to know how many people were involved. And then, my second question is, and again, maybe I could defer to Mr. Rice to answer this, is, because this was called for by the many other board members that weren't on here. So, when we have an audit like this audit, Mr. Rice, does the, does the Audit Committee put their recommendations together and then bring those recommendations to the board as to what we're seeking input on? Does that make sense, Mr. Rice?
Well, I'll explain it like this, and by the way, I can't raise my little triangular thing, because I hope that's not a signal to me, Dr. Whitbeck, that you won't may ask questions anymore, but, so I just have to raise my hand. Just, that's okay, Dave. Okay.
Oh, no.
Each year, the Audit Committee will meet and, working with the superintendent, determine which areas that we're going to audit. And we can only do three or four at the most. So, we try to make sure that when we're auditing different departments, there's not overlap so that we're overburdening a department, and they're in an audit all the time and can't do their work. So, this audit was commissioned in 2019, and just when we were trying to get started and to get a good head of steam up, COVID hit, and then, that had to be put on hold for a little bit. So, the Audit Committee does not determine or tell Gibson how to conduct. Gibson, if there's a, with the Communications Department, Gibson will meet with Ms. Sofr and her team at the beginning, and determine how the audit is going to progress. And then, Gibson comes to the district and sits down and does their homework, and then normally, return to their office and compile the results. And then, they meet with, they come back and meet with that department once again to say, this is what we found, these are some recommendations, do you agree with them, do you disagree, do you partially agree, or whatever it is, so that that department is fully aware of what the audit has revealed, and they can answer questions, have time to answer questions, to go back. And once both sides, or once the department being audited has had a chance to adequately respond, then we will meet, then the Audit Committee will meet with both groups. And so, there are no surprises, because the goal of the audit is to, for continuous self-improvement, and to, and have an outside firm come in and give us a grade, if you will. And then, once they have, we sit in, the Audit Committee sits in the meeting with the department being audited and the auditors, and we hear the results, and the administration gets a chance to comment and respond. And if we, if the Audit Committee accepts the audit, then we'll schedule it to be presented to the full board, at which time, it will enter into the public domain. So, that's pretty much the process that we use. I would say we have a very robust audit program, because it's been going on now for about nine years, and we rotate. Some things are audited annually, such as the financial statement, other things are audited every three to five years, and we just try to rotate that, so no department's being audited more than it really needs to be. I don't know if that answered your question.
That does, and so, just to follow up, so determining whether the focus was on internal data, gathering data from internal stakeholders versus external, that was Gibson's determination, or, in conjunction with the Communications Department?
I think it was in collaboration with the Communications Department.
Okay, very good. And I would just note, I do appreciate that you mentioned policy information. I do know that we have a, we do also have a policy in the B series that says we're going to have procedures on auditing, and we're, we don't have that yet, so I know we'll be working on that soon. And then, if I could just, I don't know if we can reflect this in the minutes somehow, because I know we're all so busy, but I do want the board, when the Policy Committee reconvenes, to make sure that we're looking at the recommendations for the policy that Gibson has recommended to us, that we should codify. I think that those were really important recommendations. So, thank you very much, Mr. Rice.
Yes, it should be one of the first things the Policy Committee looks at.
Right, so, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Rice. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And I would like to thank Ms. Monkowitz and Mr. Gibson. Oh, do you have a question?
No, actually, I just want to say to Ms. Hanlon, because I'm also new on the Audit Committee, so your question totally made sense, because I wasn't sure how the whole process worked. So, I think Mr. Rice explained the same thing to me before the, we had the meeting. So, I appreciate you asking that question, so the public also can understand the process. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Monk, Monkowitz, and Mr. Gibson. We appreciate all the services that you provided these many years. Mr. President?
Thank you both, as well. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Okay, our next agenda item is Board Member Reports. Dr. Gilliam, do you have our activity report?
Yes, that I do. And good evening. The Board has participated in the following activities: Board Audit Committee meeting, Marshall High School Homecoming Parade, Board Officer Meeting with Dr. Whitbeck, Gulf Coast Area Association Meeting, TASSA and Tasby Conference, one-on-one meetings with the Superintendent, Attendance Boundaries Meeting, State of Higher Education, FBISD Annual Band Night, Student Leadership 101, State of the Schools, State of the County, UIL Region 13 Marching Contest, Fort Ben ISD Men's Fest Choir Event, Welcome Reception for Dr. Christy Whitbeck, Meeting with J.C. Genton, Blue Ridge Elementary School Spark Park Dedication, Marshall High School, The Lion King Performance, and Head Coaches Cohort. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gilliam. Do we have any special reports? Nope? Okay. Consent Agenda. Do we have any items on the consent agenda that any board member wishes to pull? Okay? Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda. It's in entirety, including Items 8A, 1, 2, 8B, 1 and 2, 8C, 1, A, B, C, D, and E.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice, second by Dr. Gilliam. Do we have discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Can everybody make sure they hit their vote button? Okay? Ms. Williams, how do you vote? I don't see her on here anymore. She was there a second ago. Okay? Okay, well, we'll just say the motion carries 6 to 0. Okay. Our next item is Action 9A. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the approval of an MOU with the Center for Reform of School Systems, Texas Institute for School Boards, to provide ongoing board training and development for an estimated cost of $15,000, and further to authorize the Superintendent to execute the agreement.
I second.
We have a second. We have a motion by Mr. Rice, second by Ms. Day. Do we have discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote. Okay. Ms. Williams, would you like to cast a vote? We cannot see you. You have your video off, don't know if you can hear us. Okay, no response. Motion passes 6 to 0. Okay, our next item is 9A2. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to consider adoption of a resolution designating a trustee to serve as the representative, and a trustee to serve as an alternate to the General Assembly of the Houston Galveston Area Council, or H-GAC, for the year 2022.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Rice, second by Ms. Day. Do we have any nominations? From my understanding, I have never served on this, but from my understanding is that this does not take a whole lot of time, there are very few meetings to attend. Would, somebody like to nominate someone?
I nominate trustee Angie Hanlon.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination of Angie Hanlon with a second by Mr. Rice. Is there any discussion? Okay? Ms. Williams, would you like to vote?
No.
Okay. The motion passes 6 to 1. Congratulations, Ms. Hanlon. Okay. Good job, everyone. We will now convene in closed session, under Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, under the following sections, 551.071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the Board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law; Section 551.072, consider purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property; Section 551.074, personnel matters; Section 551.076, security matters; Section 551.082, student discipline matter or complaint; or Section 551.0821, personally identifiable information about public school students. Okay, we will now convene in closed session. Okay, we will now convene in closed session.
Okay, the time is 9:38. The Board has now reconvened in open session. Do we have closed session action items?
Yes, Mr. Rosenthal, but I'm going to ask if you would like to do the alternate.
I think, yeah, let's do the closed session first and then yes.
You want to do the closed session, okay. Yes, I have a motion.
Mr. Rice is going to go and, okay.
Okay, you ready for that motion?
Yes.
Okay, I move that the Board authorize the Superintendent to finalize a settlement in Harrington et al. v. Ingram et al., cause number 15-DCV-22341.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Hannon and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? I do not see Ms. Williams. Is she on there somewhere? She just joined? Is she on? Okay, Ms. Williams, we are voting on closed session action item. Ms. Hannon, would you mind reading that motion again, please?
Sure. I move that the Board authorize the Superintendent to finalize a settlement in the Harrington et al. v. Ingram et al., cause number 15-DCV-22341.
Do you have any discussion on that, Ms. Williams, or are you ready to vote?
I'm about to, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, in my haste to almost make this a record open session, I forgot to ask for an alternate to the General Assembly of the Houston-Galluston Area Council. So, Mr. Rice, would you mind making that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I move to consider adoption of a resolution designating a trustee to serve as an alternate to the General Assembly of the Houston-Galluston Area Council, H-GAC for short, for the year 2022.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rice, a second by Dr. Gilliam. And so, just to recap, our representative will be Ms. Hannon, so we are seeking an alternate.
I, uh... I nominate Dr. Gilliam to be alternate.
Okay, we have a, okay, we have a nomination of Dr. Gilliam and a second. Okay, do we have discussion?
Mr. President, I believe that is an amendment to the original motion, so we need to vote on the amendment to add Dr. Gilliam as the alternate and then come down and vote on the original motion.
Okay, so basically then we are amending 9A2 to add Dr. Gilliam as an alternate. So we will have, and then we can go back and do that entire motion with Ms. Hannon as the representative and Dr. Gilliam as the alternate. So do we have this?
Mr. Rosen. As a second motion to nominate a, an alternate since the Board already voted.
Right, okay, okay, that does sound simpler, okay.
So, Mr. Brush, I have a question. Ms. Hannon nominated Dr. Gilliam as the alternate, but I don't believe it was in the form of an amendment to the motion, or was it? Would it qualify as an amendment?
So I do, that would not qualify as an amendment just as much as the discussion in the motion.
Okay, so, Ms. Hannon, would you like to restate your motion that you're moving to amend my original motion to include Dr. Gilliam as the alternate?
Yes, you want me to give that a shot?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, here we go. I move to, I'm just nominating, not amending, correct? This is just a second motion.
No, you are amending the original motion.
Okay. I amend the original motion to consider adoption of a resolution designating a trustee to serve as the representative and a trustee to serve as the alternate to the General Assembly of the Houston-Galveston Area Council.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hannon, I confused you.
You did.
It's just an amendment to the motion for the alternate. And just say, I would like to amend the motion to nominate Dr. Gilliam to service the.
Okay, I can do that. I would like to amend the original motion to nominate Dr. Gilliam as the alternate.
Second.
Okay, do we have discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
And I'm gonna no.
Okay, so the motion passes, the amendment passes six to one. So do we now need to go back and?
Yes.
Okay, so we have an amended motion on the table, which would be, again, 9A2 with Ms. Hannon to serve as the representative and Dr. Gilliam to serve as the alternate to the General Assembly of the Houston-Galveston Area Council for the year 2022. Is that correct? Okay, so do we have any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, motion carries, six to one. Okay, congratulations, Ms. Hannon and Dr. Gilliam. Okay, we've considered action on closed session. I believe we are due for an adjournment to have a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
This meeting is now adjourned.